So is this all of the townships have in Maine have gotten along with the state governments recall? This is.
I'll make a motion that we allow Kevin Sull and the resident of Union, Maine to speak.
Second.
Okay, discussion about Kevin speaking. Okay, all in favor, raise your hands. Okay, article passes, go ahead.
Kevin, I can respond to that. There is state statute that specifically outlines how a recall process would happen if you don't have your ordinance. The town doesn't have its own ordinance. Our ordinance reflects much of what's in there, but it helps clarify it for both residents and staff in order to ensure compliance. That's all.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Okay, seen none, all in favor? All opposed? Article passes. Okay. Article three, Shell Town and Land articles view district standards of the Corzoning Code to remove unit floor area minimums.
So.
Second by Rufus. Good. Okay, discussion.
Why?
I can speak to that. So a recent update to the Corzoning Code was done at our last annual town meeting to become more compliant with the state's LD 2003 law that went into effect July first. One of the things we did at that time was to, we made a change to the Corzoning Code to add minimum units, unit floor area minimums. Upon later or subsequent review by the state, they determined that in order to be fully compliant with LD 2003, we had to remove those. So now we're removing.
Thank you, Ben. So the sound, so you hold municipalities, townships have to comply with this if they have ordinances or codes like we do.
If a municipality has enacted a zoning ordinance beyond the required ordinances of shoreline zoning and a couple others, yes, they have to comply with LD 2003. And the state's been engaged in their review process for all 400 main municipalities to do that over the past year and a half or so.
Assuming they have a.
Assuming they have an ordinance, yes.
One last question. Just looking quickly at the Corzoning Code, for instance, it's just great. The minimum unit for a is currently 400 square feet. So that's obviously a large area. Could you just clarify, is that for the minimum size of a unit within another building or can it be a standalone?
Either. Yeah, either, either one, but it's being removed. Yep, it's going away entirely. So there is, there isn't going to be a minimum.
Yeah. I'll just add one other point to that. We need to remove this in order to get a check from the state for all the work we had to put into complying with LD 2003. So the work we did in June, we submitted a invoice to the state saying, look, we've complied. They said, well, we're going to review your, your updates to your code. When they did that, they said, well, you got to fix this little thing too. And so that little thing is holding up our check from the state for 10 grand. So there's the impetus and reason we need to get it done before the end of this fiscal year. Yep.
Did that change? Do you foresee that there would suddenly be a lot of very small? I'm just trying to understand what difference would occur as a result of that? Would there be a lot of little tiny, tiny notices out there or something?
Yeah. No, we don't anticipate any change. In fact, we put the minimum unit floor size in to try and combat the possibility that there may be micro units. And the state objected to that because it was deemed to be a metric of density, which violated the way that our Corzoning Code addresses the LD 2003 standards specifically for the creation of like additional housing units and ADUs and things like that. Our code is perfectly adequate to manage what needs to be managed without the minimum unit floor size. Yeah. It's not going to change anything. Yeah, yeah. But great question.
Okay, for the discussion. All those in favors? All who oppose? Article passes. Okay, Article four, Shell Town and Land, Article four, section nine, additional structures of the Corzoning Code.
Done.
Perfect discussion.
I bet I know what question is.
And wait. Why?
A couple of reasons. The primary motivator for this change was that we had a, I'm sorry, can I speak to this?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We had, we had an a particular resident who has a business in a district and they were not compliant and because of the types of additional structures that they were using in it. And when it was brought to our attention, it made the planning board question whether the metrics around additional structures were appropriate in all districts. And so we revisited it sort of as a wholesale question to, with, you know, both to, in an effort to get this person into compliance or provide a pathway for this person to become compliant by allowing a permissible path for their additional structures, but also again, just reviewing for consistency and clarity and make sure that the, the metrics across the districts made sense. Additionally, I should say that the planning board has been continuing to work on this issue and will be bringing or proposing further changes to additional structures at a future meeting. Probably a special town meeting in the fall.
A lot of jargon there.
Sorry.
Can provide, kind of, may I provide a little more? So I'm currently serving as the interim code enforcement officer. I became aware that a project or a property in the fabrication district had additional structures that were outsides and had never been properly permitted. So and after the fact was filed, but in order for this person to get into compliance. So this is Newcastle Marine, it's a new owner, new ownership. There were some structures built to accommodate large boats. And especially in the winter, like today, wouldn't be able to be outside working. So there's these wrapped buildings in there. They're not screened to build, put a screen up along Route one would be astronomically expensive and unnecessary. So the question to the planning board was, you know, what modifications could be done to address this? It drew into a broader conversation about additional structures. And that's essentially what this changed. So this would not only help that particular property owner become compliant, it would address any future issues related to additional structures in these districts.
So then, like living on the old road and being in zone E. Is, is this also going to come into effect in that area also? Do you understand my question?
I do.
Additionals.
Getting at is that and couldn't this be that he's in a fabrication district that, that it is exclusive to that district and not to myself putting in a whole bunch of votes, so, you know, getting that best.
Yeah. But kind of the use though.
Yeah, so we, we did two things. We, we looked at the metrics in table 4.1 of the additional structures. And then we also added language to tie the, to, to the specific Marina dry storage use that's listed in the use table for that district. I believe that you, you're in probably, I think, D four or five.
It's neighborhood. It's Mills.
D three?
Yeah.
D three.
D three? Okay, yeah. There were no changes to your district.
For the discussion.
David Lebeck, thirty third industry. Isn't the additional section five, is that just sort of to make a particular project happen or to address a certain property? Seems like. I don't know, is all of a sudden you talk infrastructure, then you're very specific about a marina. Is it happening just to favor this project or this property?
No, it's, it's, it's specifically in regards to the use. So there was a lot of conversation about different ways to address that use, needing the ability to have structures that weren't necessarily, you know, fully insulated or structures that could be turned into dwelling units essentially. Additional structures, the way they're represented in the code cannot be converted ever into dwelling units. That's very important. And but at the same time, we realized at the time, you know, I think the maximum was 300 square feet in the fabrication district, 300 square feet for an additional structure. The thinking previously had been, well, that's like, you know, a garden shed, a chicken coop, you know, something like along those lines, right? A little carport or something like that. No, nothing, nothing, nothing big, maybe not even necessarily completely permanent, but there's a path to permit it. But 300 feet was deemed to be just too small for that use because they need a lot of additional storage of things for that specific type of use. So.
Part of the reason is that if a code is supposed to apply to the whole community. if the code is supposed to apply to the whole community and it looks like it's just addressing that one block or the use on that one block.
Well, yeah.
It also applied to say that there was a boat surge plus uh out past Sherman.
Correct. So it would apply to that.
Yeah, any use that has a Marina dry storage use.
But if you go on to the sub A, it says certain um structures of certain A can be moved. And isn't that just a statement to that particular um business that they have to bring down?
Yeah, that that use a Marina dry storage use, when the use is discontinued, the additional structures must come down.
Oh, that.
Yes. Yeah, like if it changes use or it's a discontinued use, the 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 goal is to not have those just continue to hang around and expire. So, yeah. Um, there was talk about, you know, the marine district and um uh, the marine district, because we have several places around town that do uh Marina dry storage, work on boats, things like that. And we only have right now one parcel in the Marina district. Um, and uh, it didn't seem like a good fit to start making changes to the actual district map. This seemed like a little bit cleaner, easier way to address just the specific use.
Not a marine, but a farm in the barn is billed as higher than the house. Is that implicated into this?
So there are, there are other standards for farm and agricultural uses uh in another place of the code. So that that has no bearing on the changes that are being proposed today.
And again, this topic area is the use.
Right. That specific one is tied to the use. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, for the changes we're talking about today. Yeah. Oh.
I just joined the call, so I have to, sorry.
No.
Uh, any further discussion on article four?
I'd just like to recuse myself from the vote. I have a lot of business dealing with that particular business, so just so there's no
Okay.
impropriety.
That'll be fine. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, see none. All in favor of article four, please raise your hands or cards. Okay, all opposed? Okay, and the oracle passes. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, all in favor? Thank you, folks.
Thank you all for coming out tonight and asking questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Feel free to stay for the public hearing we're having right now, too.
Oh, yeah, public hearing on ballot question.
It actually, you'll be arrested in this one. It's quick. All right, so I guess we'll call the public hearing to order. It is now seven thirty two. Um, let me get to Okay.
While we are here.
Okay, we have a, we're having a public hearing on the potential at what we want to add to the June tenth ballot, which is our written vote a week before the town meeting to see if the community would like to address having future um budgets on the ballot versus voted on at a town meeting. We did this in twenty twenty and twenty one because of COVID. And our thought is, if if the town wants to do it, right, if they don't, that's fine, too. But our thought was, um, in looking at the numbers, like our town, annual town meeting last year had thirty eight people voting. The year before it was fifty four. Um, I don't know what it was in twenty two. I didn't have, I didn't write that number down. But in those same years, we had three hundred and sixty two people last year voting on the ballot, a hundred and eighty three the year before, three sixty two in twenty two, three thirty six in twenty one and seven eighty one in twenty twenty. So we have a lot more participation when it's by ballot than in the town meetings. We're just a little concerned that the town meetings aren't getting the turnout, so the whole budget's being voted on by a very small number of people. So we would put it to the voters as to whether this this year, we're going to do it in the town meeting. But the week before, we would ask residents if they want to um put this on the ballot for the following year instead of at a town meeting. So it's a public hearing if anyone has any comments or thoughts about it. Yeah, Kevin?
Yes, yes. I personally think uh well, I would like to ask if um it has been entertained to have the no change in the way that it is done as a uh, the town meeting to vote on the budget at that particular time to have it between uh March and April.
We've, we've discussed that.
And my uh you know, I think that in the Lincoln County news, they had, no, not that it is anything like, but they had their thirty seven warrants went through. Maybe they had a good number of people, whatever. I see that on the town sign down in um Woolerich, that they're having theirs in April. And it's during the time that um uh, kids are still in school. Whereas June, um that everybody's out of school, maybe they're planning a vacation time and one thing or another, therefore they're they're not available. Right. And I think that one of the other aspects to this, too, in the maybe we get more people in to have it at this time is that also seeing, I think is correct in the Lincoln County news about Lincoln Academy having forty eight different foreign students that maybe it would be uh, something where uh, if that were held there, uh, the moderator could entertain the people's um idea of these students being able to sit in.
You mean to observe?
Yeah. Uh, so that is my thought and um uh, you know, I'm coming from afar, I I appreciate being able to do this publicly, so.
Who is here? Yes, we 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 used to have it in March.
It is public, shouldn't we hear from the public? Okay. You know, or you guys want, I'm sorry, responding to?
I I don't know. What's the protocol? Can we?
Public hearing, shouldn't the public speak first before the word is launched?
Uh, my uh, my view of public hearings is that um as long as all of you are members of the public in Newcastle, uh, you're free to give an opinion. Doesn't matter where they're sitting up there down here. Um, but.
No, I meant in terms of response, like the response. Right.
Sure, that's fine. Yeah, you go through all the public, like, you know.
One at a time? Okay. Sorry.
No, I appreciate the procedural.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I love.
I know you do, more than anyone I know.
Yes. Uh, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll try to be real brief. Um, the the primary reason for when we have our town meeting, annual open town meeting, uh, it is because of how we run our fiscal year. So um, our fiscal year used to run on the calendar. In other words, it expired the last second of December and began the first second of January, and now that change happens the last day of June, the first day of July. So we run on a fiscal calendar instead of a calendar year, calendar. Does that make sense? So back when uh, the town used to run back in I think the change was made in oh, five oh six. Um, we ran, does that sound right, Peter?
Uh, I think.
Yeah, um, the town. Yeah, it was around then.
Four oh seven.
Yeah, we made that change to run on a, on a calendar, uh, not on a calendar year. And so there are some towns in Lincoln County like Noble Borough and Edgecombe and Woolwich that still run their year from on the calendar year. Um, and it's about half and half, I think, now in the towns in Lincoln County, run it one way and half of it run the other way. I think the county still runs itself on the calendar year. We chose to run it on the, on the, on the, what they call the fiscal year. So that that's the primary reason. And if if we were to attempt to hold an open annual town meeting um in March, um, we'd be doing it um without really good um data uh, as to what our needs would be, because we wouldn't, we've still got a whole nother quarter of the year to go or more than a quarter of the year to go before we close out the year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Oh, and the, and the schools, and that that's a big, thank you for saying that. The big reason we made the change was because the school budget wasn't, isn't published. In other words, the needs of the school isn't published until really close. We bug them every year uh, to to get it earlier and we need it um, in order to get it to the meeting in June. When we had our town meeting in March, we just guessed at a number. Literally. And some years we were wrong because the number that they needed was published after the town meeting. Which meant there were a couple of times we had to go back to the voters, hold a special town meeting and ask for additional funds. Which gets messy. So we decided to clean it all up. But that's how we run it now.
But Kevin, we would still have meetings like this. We would still have quarterly meetings. We probably would still have our annual town meeting with just not the budget part. If people want to do it that way. Maybe they don't.
But I think the way that we would design the ballot, which the does the um not, so don't take this as a specific question, but basically to the effect would the town want to um hold the next election cycle through ballot whereby annual town meeting? So you'd have you'd have, you'd be basically voting on the next, the next year's procedure. So if the town comes out and votes and says, no, we want to have we all want to meet in class in the, in school and have you know, have an annual meeting as usual, then they would vote no, and we would, we would be status quo. We'd just do it that way. So it's, it's giving it to the town to decide what, how they want to do it on a yearly basis.
So um, just to add a little context to the numbers, and Michelle, back me up. I think you ran a count on the number of registered voters we have in the town, and it's around eighteen hundred. Okay, so
Yeah.
That's a li, based on the attendance we had at open town meeting last year, that's
We'd thirty eight.
A little bit more than two percent of the voters of Newcastle showed up for annual town meeting.
It's not great.
Can I say one other thing? And that has to do with my uh, understanding of 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 this, of the town meeting and the going through the budget and saying yes or no. But the um, not being uh clearly informed as to why there would be an increase here or a decrease there or one thing or another as to each on a line item, let's say, right? So that you okay, this is inflation. Okay, this is because there's an increase in this cost or but then the ones that are not, the ones that are clearly uh fifty percent or something over, then, you know, why?
So the, the, the discussion that we had at the board level before we thought proposed this was if we, if, if we ask the voters to do this process for the following um, I believe what we had talked about was having a series of public hearings on the budget that precede the vote.
Yeah.
So you'd get all that, you'd still have the opportunity to engage in the conversation, understand the numbers. Um, the only difference would be you'd vote at it at the poll instead of in person. We don't allow voting on Zoom.
Well, okay. Well, I mean, it it is something where if you have our a person's email address and it becomes easier for them to log in, right, as a citizen and you know them as being as.
Are you asking?
Can I ask the the town clerk who's shaking her head? And our lawyer, I believe Maine State Law does not allow
It's not powered by the statute.
For voting virtually.
You could attend the meeting virtually to dirt, the budget workshops.
Yeah, you can watch those.
You could watch those, you know, if if you couldn't be here but wanted to get the full explanation, it would be harder to have input in the conversation, but you could at least.
And I guess what I just heard is that it would be incumbent on future stakeholders to make an extra effort to communicate the budget and make itself available for your uh, questions outside of that. And Karen, I've heard you say it a couple of times. It's the budget that we voted on. What about those other articles that we usually vote on? Will that be on that, too, or is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, all, everything.
Right, we wouldn't necessarily need the annual town meeting to run business, because it will be, most of the, what we currently do, it would be on the ballot. I assume maybe that would be used for um, additional ordinance amendments or cleanup of that language. So the annual town meeting would mostly address that.
Is there a requirement that we have to meet every year?
That's a decision of the select board by calling for a ballot. So that when they say, we're going to put this on the ballot and address it through the ballot, it's their decision to do it. What we're asking what this public hearing about is saying, hey, residents, do you agree with us? Because we're, we're exploring doing this. Do you, do you agree we should try to do it this way and save you that one nice sunny warm day of chum?
And you.
Yeah.
Uh, when you're probably traveling or something. So thank you. Yeah, my question just follows up on what David just asked. I I think what Ben said about the public hearings, um, in a lot of sense as well, I was just wondering out loud, uh, perhaps in addition to that, uh, you could add uh, like a Q and A kind of feature on the website, like if a citizen has a question on a particular item outside a public hearing window, uh, could they add that email and the response opposed to a question and generate clarification, it would be publicly available.
Instead of an email to Kevin to ask him, something that would be more available.
Real, like in, in real time?
Forward.
Just, but just posted.
Just posted, yeah.
And then at the convenience of the board members, it would respond and the public would be able to see you have it cataloged on the other side of the question.
Is, can we do something like that on our website?
I mean, we're doing that now, but I, I like the idea of asking the residents to also ask the question so that we, we have time, staff have time to respond.
Yep, that's a good idea.
It's great. I can do it for this budget process. Are you also on the agenda distribution list, Phil? Do you get the emails from me about the meetings and things?
I don't. Uh, I just took the website, but I would appreciate it.
I'll, I can add, I'll make sure I get your email address before we leave tonight. I'll make sure you get those, because a lot of residents are starting to realize, like, I am sending this information out. I'm trying to get feedback and people interested in attending. We've had three budget workshops in the month of March. We did not have much uh, any participation.
How about none?
Almost, almost not. You guys are, whatever.
But um
it's been really informative. That information is, is available online and and I can, and I've been constantly trying to get that information out.
Yep.
Uh, that's a good concept of Q and A from the public.
Don't follow up on that, yeah, comment, okay. Um, one of the potential benefits to moving to doing the budget in particular on referendum and having a public hearing process that precedes that referendum vote is that those who are interested in the budget have questions who potentially impact changes impart changes to the budget. Instead of being presented with the budget when you arrive at the door at town meeting, trying to understand it in the few minutes you have before we dive into it, not really understanding it very well, because you haven't had a whole lot of time to digest it, minutes only, uh, before it gets called to a vote. You, that, that length of time would be longer. Um, so that that could be a benefit to citizens who are interested in in budgeting. We haven't had a whole lot, but we might have more. The goal of even talking about this is how do we get greater participation? That's the, that's the, that's the goal.
And I for one appreciate Kevin sending out the information because I, I get it.
Good.
And and so it's.
Good, I'm glad, I'm glad you like it.
Me, too.
It's a lot. Jigsaw. Jigsaw.
I'll find ways to do the paper and I'm typing to put flyers out or something. Not flyer, but, but um.
For which, for which piece? We could try some more things. I mean, it goes, how many people on your distribution list now, Kevin?
Uh, about a hundred.
So about a hundred people did get notifications of the budget meetings. Um, and it, it's been on the website. But every bit might turn out a few more people. So we could look at maybe putting up a couple of.
We are.
Things for, for the next season when we do this.
Then they, we have a community action grant out right now, an application out for a grant. And part of that grant is uh better communication tools. Um, so yes, we have a website. It's funky, but it work, I make it work. We make it work. We make it work. And you know, I'm, I'm trying to build that rapport with a handful of residents from different parts of town. Have different, I have email listservs for a handful of different groups around town. I make sure they get all the information, but. Any other suggestions you have can probably be funded in part by that grant if we do get it.
Like posters, you could put some posters around.
Super old school. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, retro. It's in fashion now.
Playing with that. My challenge is, is the staffing limitations, but maybe the board members or members of the public would volunteer to put some stuff up.
But what about digital sign?
Oh, that one comes back. No, it's just a decision that a former boards is.
Signs, yeah, the signs ordinance.
I've struggled with.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's something we could look into.
That and cost.
How about a sandwich board? I kind of see a sandwich board.
Have a one you wear airplane with a, you know, behind it.
A, a big banner drag behind an airplane.
We know a guy that can do that.
So, yep. But you're right. Just would love to see more people get involved in the budget process. So. Anything we can do. If you get, if you have more suggestions, bring them along. Anybody else have any other thoughts on it?
So what's the process for here after this public hearing? Does it just kind of come up at the next town meeting?
So the, the select board will have to make a formal uh decision on the language for the ballot question. And then they'll have to uh approve that for us to then have it printed on a ballot for your, for the public to vote. Cause this year there is, oh, talk about it now. Nomination papers are out now for three seats. One is a select board seat. One is a uh great salt base seat and one is a school board seat. So those three questions will be on the ballot along with this potential ballot question, should the board decide to. I'm sorry, sanitary district. What did I say? Great salt base sanitary district. You got those words. I got most of it in there. Sanitary district.
Right. I mean, if, if people showed up and said, that's a stupid idea. And everybody said, we hate it. We want annual town meeting. Then maybe we wouldn't.
Yeah.
Put it on the ballot. But I think I'm getting the feeling that most people think maybe it's a good idea to at least explore what people think of it. Yeah. Am I right?
So it's a straw poll, really.
It strikes me as a good idea, but I can't see the, the press coverage of Bristol and see that they hack them in. Like what, what's the difference?
I think it really is time of year.
Yeah.
Well. And, and controversy.
And controversy.
Oh, yeah. The Bristol was because we were voting on a huge uh budget for the expansion of the school. So, yeah. It was like.
They seem to be consistent with that. It's.
Maybe it's because this board's doing such a good job.
All right. If there's no further questions, I will close the public hearing. The time at seven fifty four. And if you don't want to stay for riveting select board meeting, you're welcome to leave now. But we could, we'll be calling that to order in a moment. Do we need to, you guys want to collect? You guys want these, right?
Oh, perfect. Shelly, I'll get you on there.
Got these back?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
That's all. And most of my. And when I was just a little bit here. Yeah, but we, we don't want to. Yeah, why don't we be self open? Yeah. We put it up on mobile cases. Her words.
Bye bye. Thanks for coming. Hopefully the drive home is a little better. See you later, Shelly.
You did great.
Did great. Thanks, Shelly.
Good night. She's salary now. No, she has, she's gonna have a tough time getting home, I think.
All right. So it is seven fifty five. We will call, call the March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five select board meeting to order. Um, we do have one amendment to the agenda, right? Six C, uh, an appointment to the planning board. Help me remember not to skip that over. Minutes of the. March tenth meeting. Um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March tenth, twenty twenty five meeting?
Someone.
That was seconded by Tor. Did anyone have any corrections or additions? I just had one thing, otherwise seemed fine to me. The six A. The last sentence, we move to authorize a town manager to expend up to ten thousand dollars for fish ladder maintenance from the L wives reserve.
Oh, I shouldn't say for each.
Oh, yes. The sentence before that, I'm like, wouldn't it? That is what we said. Right? It's not for each calendar year. It's just for the share.
Yep. That's on me. Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. All right. If nothing else and all in favor of them as amended, passes by nothing. Do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda tonight? Kevin?
Yep.
Yeah, why don't you, we'll be more formal in this part.
State your name.
Yep. And we'll, we'll start with the stating name and address again.
Uh, Kevin, wait, I have two things. Uh, one is, I wanted to find out what the status was on the SCBA. FEMA grant um for that equipment for the fire.
No response yet. And as you, I'm sure you've seen or are aware, uh, federal government has slowed down on responding to any grant applications right now.
Okay, so, so we've, we've approached the state representatives and the congressional.
Oh, they're aware. And I've had conversations with our uh representatives or their, uh. Their representatives who help us get to them, so.
Okay, well, very good because I think it's really important. There's, there's no, yeah, I won't say anything more. And then, and the other thing is my concern is that I just want to make sure that uh, um, my opinion. Uh, it was to things going forward with the village partnership initiative that uh. The speed tables that were discussed can, can be really considered for Mel's Road. Okay. I, I think it's important living on it. And I think in talking with several residents who have children that they're. Very concerned too about the speed that goes on. And we know that there's resources of. There aren't, there is no enforcement from a defined police department here. And so it would be like Lincoln County. Um, and there's, I'm sure um stretched. Then too with many things other than trying to confirm that people are abiding by the current thirty mile an hour speed limit. For two tenths of a mile, right? You know, and so I think that it would be beneficial. If those were installed to slow people down for that two tenths of a mile to that stop sign and um. In everybody's best interest.
Easy to put in a request into that.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
We do, and we do have a good partnership with Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. We do allow them to use this facility as a resting place. Restrooms, conference room, so on, so forth. So they are, they do have a presence in that, in Newcastle.
Yeah.
Um, and I will, I will suggest that they consider a detail down there for a while.
Yeah, and it, it, yeah, and, and so it uh, I, I, I see them. Quite a bit, but it's just, I know that they're stretched in and it's not, uh, it's, it. There, there's other things, there's other fires to play out. So thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Kevin.
Any other comments on, on items not on the agenda tonight? All right, then we'll move on to unfinished business five A, the L wives fish committee bylaws. I thought we already approved.
You guys didn't. I mean, I probably should have had you when you first saw it, but I figured, well, just get the formal okay. Cause I sat with noble boroughs. I said, you know what? I actually didn't have them take a vote on it. You guys have voted on the ten thousand. You approved the expenditure from the prior years or the prior year. Uh, this is just that last piece of formal recognition of the, of the group. And, and what their bylaws are going to be.
All right.
We, we approved the L wives fish committee bylaws as presented.
Also, I can bet.
Anyone have anything else they want to talk about on it?
Yeah, I, I do have a question. I'm, I'm just curious, um. Procedurally, is this something that we need to do?
Because it's two towns and I would really want consistency in how one, that group operates. But I want both towns support in running it this way. That's the way I see it.
So this is symbolic.
Yes.
I mean, the L Y fish committee can set their own bylaws and amend them however they choose.
But that's not what's driven there.
This is the town between the towns.
It's a two agreement. So the planning board in your, in the core zoning code ordinance specifically says you set your own bylaws. The planning board does. There's no, there's no um way to govern that, this without someone's approval. So it'd be best to have the select board support some sort of frame. I'm, I'm mostly looking for a rubber stamp here.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, this is my approach is, is seeing that. Um, the committee has recommended their own, their own bylaws. And because this is two towns being represented and appointed from, it makes sense to have both boards also in support of how this committee is run.
So if we had a, a more formal interlocal agreement for the O F fish committee?
Yes.
We wouldn't need to do this.
I would, I would support that. Yeah.
Okay. Just curious.
It does, it does say the last article that the bylaws may be amended by a majority vote of the committee. Subject to approval by both the Newcastle and Newcastle can't speak tonight and noble borough select boards. So I guess we, it's written right in there that we do need to.
Well, you could say strike that and we don't care.
Uh, but I mean, if, uh, if I understand Kevin's point, which is what I support is that this is basically a, a formal endorsement by this board. This committee's bylaws.
Yes.
Simple.
Yep. And uh, this, this select board leaning into this concept. Helps strengthen the arrangement between two town select boards and es- essentially what that committee is charged with doing.
Representing all of us.
Right.
All right. No other discussion than all in favor. All right, passes five, nothing. Agenda item five B is. Page. Uh, the budget.
Yeah, it's all the time.
All the budget, all the time. Okay. How do we, how do you want to handle this? It's a big thing. We'll go, go over the things that we've talked about adding.
Yeah, I think touching on the background, like th- this board has done a significant amount of work in the past month reviewing the budget. And in fact, last Wednesday, we were here from six thirty to ten o'clock reviewing and discussing elements of this budget. So, you know, it's, it may seem like it's being done without any input. Um, but I've really worked hard to try to engage with the public and see if folks would show up for these discussions. Um, and that's why I think it's important to discuss it at a meeting where it's recorded, where. You know, we can have a more uh honest conversation about what has been discussed or elements of it. I don't think we need to go line by line again, but. It's important to at least identify what did we talk about specifically about changes? And that's where that little calculator was created. So the one that there's a click, there's a link there that takes you to the um, the one where the staff have been monitoring. And it reflects a handful of changes that were proposed. And I'll put that up on the screen too, just so it's there. Uh, but this is kind of what I wanted to at least touch on tonight was, you know, our conversation with the community and public services and identifying the handful of, um. Sorry, we can.
If you can read it without getting your nose on the screen, it's pretty little.
My, my thought was, you know, the budget that I presented to the board didn't include any of the increases that were approved. Or that were requested by uh community agencies. Um, mostly because I was trying to present a uh maintenance of effort budget. What, what we need to do this, next year that we're doing currently this year, what, what are those cost increases? So I was just trying to present that. The requests that I had um provided. Um, didn't show those increases. Now, these increases are. Uh, a will of, of voters from Newcastle. So those agencies went and collected signatures from residents in Newcastle. In order to, to make that request for an increase. Um, and this board in workshop discussed having that as a separate section. Essentially, you're a pass through board that goes to the voters and they make a decision about increases to these agencies or not. So that's that first section. So if you go through this and, and this document was created where. It shows um sort of a summary. And if you, you, you know, there's a public version of this, you can go download yourself and have access to it. But what it does is you can choose which category you're adding or subtracting money to. Uh, and you can change this to yes, if you were to vote for it. And it would show you sort of just what it does to the overall municipal budget. So you can go through and make these changes um yourselves, but I wanted to at least have this conversation with the board. Show and be able to show this publicly what the changes are. There are a few other items that were changed. We talked about, um. We had a little extra money in accounts that we didn't add for the video recordings. We moved some of that money to planning. Planning boards, meetings that are being recorded. Yet I forgot to take it out of the town managers or the, the select boards. Out of the general government side of things. So that's a change there. Um, there's the community public service transfer station. So we assumed because that bill comes in calendar year, FY twenty six, first half of FY twenty six. I'm fairly certain that's going to go up. So we bumped that thirty two hundred just, just to try to cover some of that expense. Um, this year I'm going to have to work with the board to see about what will be money if we need to cover that uh current year increases. The uh mooring fees, and this is subject to another item on your, uh, we talked a little bit about how low our. Moring fees are compared to other communities around the mid coast area. Um, so we talked about increasing just a little bit for not, for residents and a larger amount for non-residents of Dammer Scott or Newcastle. And then uh the, so that would help in, in, help out with the increase for mooring fees to help cover. Some of the trainings that I know both our harbor master and, and deputy harbor master will have to do next year.
Well, our mooring, our mooring fees were not coming close to covering the costs of the harbor master and. Oh, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it was almost break even, but and then we, and we broke, we also broke that out as a separate section of the budget. So we can more, better monitor that.
Right.
And make decisions about mooring fees to help cover the cost of, of our harbor needs in the future. I know that one item that's going to need replacement is the um pump. Pump house station in the, in the harbor. Uh, I know Dammer Scott is working with me to, to apply for a grant. So we can get that replaced. They've taken the lead on that. Um, that will have to be replaced in the next couple of years. We don't get the grant. Um, there will be a conversation about how we, how we jointly pay for that replacement. So. You know, I, I just want to be able to monitor these things better going forward. And I know in the past, it's just been. Sort of just shoved in general government. Really, it's a, it's a separate conversation from general government expenses. Um, and then we had a conversation with our janitor. They're going to keep their. Um, and then we had a conversation with our janitor. They're gonna keep their rates the same. So we've decreased one line and. Uh, because of the rate change, but we moved that money over to add a few more visits here, because we had reduced here. Um, to try to offset the cost of that. Uh, but now we're just pumping a little bit, a few more stops here. So you know, it doesn't need to be cleaned as often in the summer and probably need to put a few more towards uh, winter between meetings. And then lastly, um, something that did come up on our last meeting that I at least wanna put on here and have a conversation about is adding up halftime. Part-time uh, assistant planner halfway through the year. So not starting them till after uh. Opportunities with interns and getting our code enforcement officer up to speed first. So um, tho- those are my focus areas and then, then I was thinking that this would be appropriate, but. You know, I just put it here because it was part of our conversation at last meeting. What you do with it is, it's your budget now.
Could I, could I suggest that instead of doing it, that was a wonderful overview. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That was three meetings. That's the, so that's a handful of things that really showed up as potential changes to the budget.
Can, can I suggest that instead of diving off the diving board right now? Um, we actually kick this discussion to um, our next meeting in the hopes that we might have numbers from the school department.
You think that's anywhere in the realm of possibility?
I, I, I think that at least identifying those community service ones is something you move forward. If you really wanna do that piece of it and then let the other one sit.
Well, I think we're pretty in agreement.
Yeah.
We were agreeing that it, we would break it out as a separate section, so the residents would feel more like they had an input on those things, right?
Yeah, so even if you do nothing else tonight, if you just take action on that element of it.
Yep.
It then moves it into a state in which I now know. But I don't have to worry about going forward, or you can just leave it.
No, we'll give you one less thing to worry about. I think we were all in agreement that we would pass the, the. The requests would be passed on to the residents to make the final decision on whether they want to fund at those levels.
And we do it as a separate warrant article.
As a separate warrant article.
Yep.
But not individual warrant articles for each provider agency.
A grouping of them.
A grouping of them, separate from the rest of the budget.
Correct.
But people can make motions within each of those if they wanted to change something.
Well, it's a category like anything.
Oh, I think we can also take this, the select board video recordings decrease. Let that go through. I don't think anyone's gonna object to that one. That was just an error.
Yeah, just give me something that I can, I can formally modify this and, and then provide another version of the summary that is now yours. But you have the next meeting and you have, you have two more select, currently regulars, regularly scheduled select board meetings to address. Changes that you wanna see happen. And I, you know, you don't have to do anything tonight if you don't want to. It just gives me something to. Provide that's new.
Yeah.
That's all. And showing there's been progress and, and discussion and, and um, some agreement among the board about changes that could be made. Or should be.
I think that's great. I personally don't feel comfortable making any.
Comfortable making any big changes.
Right. Uh, without, without a more complete picture. So um, I, I would go ahead and make the motion that we. Um, take the provider agency um, line item, let's group them into a category as a separate warrant article. Or town meeting and. And, yeah.
And push the funding levels that they.
And, 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 yeah, and, and.
I'm sorry, was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
I, I do wanna um, if we can engage discussion still, um, I do wanna. Just point out two standout numbers and percentage increases here, just to explain it. To the limited audience and anybody else who's listening in. Um, so planning and development was an increase of thirteen point two percent.
Wait a minute, hold on, we gotta, I'm gonna pull the procedural out. We have a motion and a second on the provider agency. Do you wanna wrap that up?
Let's vote on that one then.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, yep, so all in favor?
Just hold on.
I was, I was, I was lumping it still in part of the whole discussion.
Oh.
That's a clean, you're right.
Yeah. Okay, so all in favor of pushing the provider agencies into a separate thing and, yeah, and.
I know.
Whatever we said, you know what I'm feeling?
I understand.
Okay.
Nothing, sorry.
Okay, so just uh, again, again, just talking to the choir here in the limited audience in the room. But the um, planning development um, increased thirteen point two percent. And Kevin, you could chime in if I miss anything. But basically, um, we're expanding the C E O capabilities and. Responsibilities in this budget, so. So, and it's a minor, I mean, we're talking ninety thousand, one hundred and two, so. It's, it's, it's not a huge part of the, the town's budget.
Well, that thirteen percent is also a movement of general government into planning and development. So I moved the um, expenses we pay for our share of the planners' uh, travel and training. In addition to.
The video recording.
Video recording. So a, a big part of that thirteen percent jump is mostly tied to. Those changes and yes, additional hours for the code enforcement officer at a slightly lower rate.
So that is um, planning development. The other mover is uh, public works. But um, it has to be noted that we took money out of this year's budget to decrease that number. Um, to pay for the um, for equipment. And so now we're back up to where we were more or less for last year's budget before we made that change. So the twenty percent. Is, is reflecting that decrease in this year's budget. So that's, just wanna point that out.
Right, and do, do we agree that Kevin can take the fourteen hundred dollar one off the list, for the budget? For that video recordings, the over, the overage. Yeah, okay, ready. Actually vote on that one, do we?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
There you go.
Yeah, sorry.
There you go. I just, you know, having that formal.
Yes.
Piece is important.
Yep, okay, good. All right, and then we'll. Look at the rest of it, hopefully next time about the, the uh, school budgets.
And that is likely.
Question marks at the end of that statement.
Okay, yeah, okay. I will reach out to our counterpart in the school department and see. I can find out what their timeline is. Yeah, so it'd be helpful to inform this. And, and, and part of this visual um, that you see on the screen, I did. I put in a four percent assumption. So, you know, that, how that impacts the bottom line. Is if you now look at it, the municipal budget, now this is the select board's budget with these quick changes, it becomes your budget. Um, I'm looking at, we're looking at a municipal budget of five point five four. Without any of these additional changes, education, I just plugged in four percent. And this goes back to what Kevin was concerned about, like, why don't we do this in March? We'd be right here where we are, still trying to figure out what is the school's budget. But we're here in April, trying, or end of March, trying to figure out what is the school's budget gonna be. Um, and if we underestimate that or overestimate, if we overestimate it, we tax the public too much. If we underestimate it. We either have to dip into our fund balance to pay for it, or we have to go back to the voters and ask for additional money. So um, I put in four percent for now, find out what they say. And Lincoln County came in at five point two six. So it came up a bit, but um, so the overall expenditure budget is up by four point seven six percent.
So our next meeting is on the fourteenth of April.
Yep.
We have, we have a few weeks.
Yep.
This next round here.
And then I, I will need, we will need to formalize the warrant articles for our final meeting in April, in order to get the. Budget uh, town, town report done.
Okay.
So we got two more cracks added.
You got two more cracks to play with these numbers and finalize this.
That's enough.
I, I agree. Yeah, we can get there. Yeah, okay.
All right. Oh, yes.
Explain what you did with the fourteen hundred, it said negative, but.
So. Yeah, it's coming out of general government because it was an, I had, um, I had moved. Some money out of the video recordings and moved them into planning and development to cover for planning board meetings. To show the true cost of planning and development. What I had forgotten to do was actually remove, reduce that in the general government. So this is a reduction of an account line. It's not a reduction of meetings to be recorded. It's just a reduction. Still recording for both planning board and select board. When we get the bill, it'll come out of select, the planning board account. Line for that, rather than the select board account line. Thank you. Yep.
All right, then, if there's no other questions or comments? One to uh, new business six A, which. Is our, I'm just doing the thing here, oh, the, the fee schedule. We looked it over, we're, we're looking at amending the fee schedule, um. Changing the mooring fees for residents from forty to fifty dollars, which is still on the low side from other towns we saw. And uh, non-residents to two hundred dollars, which.
Is in line.
Is in line and it's a lot more than it was, but it's definitely in line with what other towns charge. And I've heard we have quite a waiting list for moorings.
We do.
Yep. And the other thing is we are going to change the building permit fee for accessory dwelling units to zero. So I don't think people will complain about that one. To encourage, I think that we're doing that right to encourage maybe some accessory dwelling.
Every weekend.
Yep. More housing.
I'll, I'll make both of those.
All right.
I'll make the first one.
Or to amend the fee schedule for mooring fees to fifteen, two hundred.
Second.
Seconded by Tom. Any discussion on those? Anyone have any questions on them? All right, then all in favor? Passes five, nothing.
Um, I'll make the second motion.
To, all right, the, the permit, building permit fee for z- to zero for the accessory dwelling units. So it was moved by Rufus, seconded by Ben. Anyone have any questions or comments on that? Then all in favor? I pass this by. Six B, Hager Enterprises Incorporated Pricing. This is the annual thing that makes my head spin. So Rufus, do you have any questions or concerns on this?
No, that's, that's pretty in line. Um, you know, these are delivered prices, so I think. You know, they're, they're certainly fair for what the market. Back says, um, you know, one thing I can't get over, and it's actually. By today's standards, not a bad price, but we're paying ten dollars a bale per head. It just blows my mind.
Oh, yeah.
Blows my mind.
It was not long ago, that was two dollars and fifty cents.
I used to stack in people's barns for four dollars. And that was not that long ago.
Yeah.
Anyhow, no, I, I think they're, it's, it's fair pricing.
All right, and do a motion to accept the H E I pricing as presented in anticipation of the forthcoming. Annual Maintenance Agreement with Hager Enterprises.
So.
Moved by Tor.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. Anyone have any questions, comments? Oh, then all in favor? Passes five. Okay, item six B, a six C.
I'll make a motion that uh, we appoint Mike Titus to the planning board.
Member number seven?
Member number seven.
I will second that.
All right.
Who?
Any.
Oh, there's no vote yet. Got a first and a second.
Torres made the motion.
Yeah. I second.
Rufus seconded it, yeah.
I thought it was you.
Doesn't happen.
It doesn't. We can always look back at the video. Um, any discussion? You, quiet.
As I always say, as long as he's willing.
Yeah. All right, then all in favor? Passes five, nothing. Congratulations. Mike, thank you so much. We appreciate it. We haven't had a full planning board in how long?
Way too long.
Yeah.
Now we just gotta find your replacement.
No, we just got one more.
Excellent. So good. All right, um. To, I have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five twentieth A P warrant for three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Eight hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-four cents.
I'll move.
Moved by Ben. Seconded by Tom. Um, did anyone have any questions, discussions?
There was one thing that caught my eye that I'm just. Oh. Headset neckband?
No, for the fire.
For the fire department?
Headset that fit underneath the helmet.
Okay.
Took for communication.
Is that for one of them?
Yeah, is that the price each?
Bluetooths to the, to their radio.
Does everybody need one or just?
No, just, but I think the idea is to get it for the cheap, so that when you're. In the hustle and bustle of a scene.
Earplugs, earplugs are much cheaper.
I don't, I haven't seen it, but I know that there's a lot of noise cancelling different things. If you're working around a pump panel and stuff, there's a lot of that.
I was hoping it was for a bunch of them.
I think it's just, I believe it's just for one. I have, I haven't put my eyes on.
It's just one, yeah. That was one. Things just cost so much more than it seems like they should be anymore. All right, any other questions or comments?
That was the one that caught my eye.
That was, that was a lot of them too. It's like, what? All right, all in favor? And it passes five, nothing. Which brings us to. Town manager report.
Okay, uh, nomination papers. I already brought this up during the meeting, um, but there's, you know, we still have, there are three open seats this June. One for a select board, one for school board, and one for the Great Salt Bay Sanitary District. Um, uh, they're due back April fourteenth. They've been out for a couple of weeks now.
Do we have, do we have?
We have one, we have one set of papers for each of the three positions have been pulled from town. So, nothing's come back to us yet, but we have one for each of the, each of the six.
Okay, at least there's not a blank one.
There, at least there's no vacancies, potentially. But that still assumes everyone has to get their papers.
Right, right.
Um, town report deadline, so if you're responsible for any of the reports in the town report. Deadline for submission is April fifteenth.
Okay.
That is Shelley's hard line to try to get everybody to get their information in, so we can do a nice job with this report. Um, please try to get them in sooner rather than later.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm not looking at you, I'm looking around the room. Not any one particular person. I, I still gotta submit my stuff, so don't feel too bad.
Okay, good.
Um, school department audited report, there's a link here in the, in this manager report that has, takes you to their report that. Concluded uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We have been working on ours. I'm not sure when we'll see that one, but forthcoming. So, um, joint workshop with Dammer Scotta, uh, the town manager in Dammer Scotta and I have been talking about. Potential week uh, that works for our schedules and he and I have identified the week of the twenty-first. I know that that's also Lincoln Academy's spring break. I don't know if you guys are around or could be for that discussion.
Come here.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Okay. All right, so now it's just a question of whether or not they got, they, they're, they have things they have to be at, so um. I'll have a straw poll soon for the boards to consider when we can get together. And then uh, just a reminder, I'm out of the office uh, Wednesday through Tuesday. That's what I have for report.
Wednesday through the following.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll be back Wednesday.
Yep.
All right, uh, let's see, do I have a motion to go into executive session? M R S A four oh five point six point E, discussion with attorney.
I don't mean, uh, did we vote on the warrant?
Did we vote on the warrant?
Yeah, we did.
We did, okay.
Good, cause I can't remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
It is good.
Thanks.
It's getting late.
It's getting late. Um, and Kevin, I don't know what, what's the M zero thirteen? Oh, that's the, that's the lot. Yep, the map and lot, lot eleven. Okay.
Don't move.
Um, and then do we, I guess we do, do both of them at once?
No, you do one at a time.
Come out with the other one, okay. All right, so moved by Ben, seconded by Rufus, all in favor? Passes five, nothing.
Okay. And they're checking, look at me.
Awesome.
Thank you so much, sir. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mike.
I wrote too much.
No, God, it's fantastic.
No, God. It's fantastic. Like I said, you've been doing the work already.